We don't have anybody else who wants to speak as far as the first round. We have a few people signed up to speak again. So I'm going to go ahead and give each of those people an additional three minutes to speak. And we'll go ahead and start with Glenn Morgan.
I don't get an extra bonus? This is your bonus? Yeah, okay. So, once again, Glenn Morgan. I live between tonight and Rochester. And, well, our final, our written submission that we make will deal with a lot more specific issues. I thought I would probably bring up a couple of issues that regardless of the divisions that we have in the county on a lot of this stuff, that I think that there could be some common ground found that aren't really addressed in the way the critical area ordinance is written right now. One of them deals with having to deal with oak trees, for example. And this is just an example of the possible approach to stewardship and environmental concerns that I think would resolve a lot of concerns that maybe property owners might have, and also some of those who approach it more from the more hardcore environmental side of things. And that is that there are a lot of people, my family included, that would like to plant oak trees on our property. In fact, we've done so and done that over many acres and realize now with the way that the oak tree ordinance is written, that that was a foolish and terrible mistake to make because it destroys the value of property and potential regulatory restrictions on it. But if we could approach this with some kind of a hold harmless approach, especially when you're talking about plants that either from a serbit culture or horticulture standpoint can be fairly easily transplanted and located in different properties, that it's a fairly simple and painless approach for Thurston County or any place to take where they could give a hold harmless agreement and allow somebody, if they make that choice, to put those plants or trees on their property and encourage them to grow and flourish without fear of regulatory reprisal or harm in the future. And I think that's a simple solution, one that could probably find a lot of common ground and where you not have a lot of division. And I know Mark spoke earlier about Lot. And I really appreciate that Lot has had a representative here today. But there really, nothing is more important than drinking water when it comes to survival. And just being on the board of the Farm Bureau in Thurston County and just a lot of them, water wars and all this discussion of water has always been important. But Lot's facility at Hawks Prairie is concerning with a 2 million gallon injection effectively of water back into the treated wastewater. There's nothing. There's no stormwater event. There's no farming activity. There's no development activity that has remotely the possibility of causing problems to the aquifer, the mat facility, and any future facilities like that. It isn't scientifically possible for the cumulative effect of all that stuff to affect our drinking water as much as that Lot facility. A lot of things are not filtered out of that, knowingly not filtered out, and can only be filtered out, to the best of my knowledge, with some other approved reverse osmosis facility or something like that. And note, right now, there's a lot of medical waste that's not filtered out. There's a lot of phosphates aren't filtered out. There's quite a few other problems, viruses, and the double chlorination process produces known carcinogens, and they aren't even tested for. And so I think just requiring a much more stringent testing on that, especially on the wells in that area, a lot of well water comes out of that area. And, you know, it's just, that seems to be, if I was to say that there's an imperative important thing that we do from protecting our drinking water, that would just have to be at the top of the list. And I don't think that that should be that controversial. It just, it shouldn't be regardless. Everybody cares about drinking water, and I think that's an important thing to look at. So, that's it. My time's well up, I'm sure.
Hey Glenn.
All right.
So, the thing with the white oak, you're talking about, what, having an instrument in place that'll allow people to plant them on their property, but there would be some sort of an instrument that would be recorded with the county that said?
Well, you know, this is actually somewhat similar to what the Fish and Wildlife Department did within the Columbia Basin with the pygmy rabbit, for example. And I've had conversations with the Fish and Wildlife, or US Fish and Wildlife about this, and it's a state fish and wildlife issue too. We were talking about animals, but it applies for plant species as well. So, if a property owner, if I'd like to plant Gary White Oak, for example, and I just want oak trees out there, if I plant them, I have the potential in the future, there's some problems with the rule right now, but I also have the potential in the future that now regulatory wise, I've planted a species of concern on my property, and in the future when it grows up, now I've got these buffers around that affect everything around it. And so, therefore, I won't. I'll plant a red oak tree or something else less common, or more common that I'm not going to be regulated by. And what we should be trying to do is encourage people to plant species that we've identified as a concerned species. And instead, we discourage that actively through the regulatory process. And what I would hope is that there's a way to come up with some kind of a voluntary, encouraging voluntary stewardship, not just saying that we encourage you to do it, but that we're going to protect you from potential regulatory harm in the future. So, if you may have to take out one of those oak trees because you decided to put a porch in your back house, I mean, you were the people that put them in there in the first place, so you shouldn't be penalized for that. The net benefit to, say, in that case, population of the oak tree is actually a positive for the community. So, we should try to encourage that type of behavior. And I can't, I don't think that would be that controversial. It's just not an approach that's been taken, and it's one I think that we could.
No, interesting thought. Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Donna Nickerson?
Hello, I'm Donna Nickerson. I'm speaking for Puget Sound, and I will begin by talking directly about the riparian area proposals that you have in the current draft. We feel that 250 feet is a better choice for marine areas that are designated under the SMP as natural and conservatory. 250 feet still is not using the precautionary approach. It would be much higher. As I mentioned, we know science tells us to satisfy all the functions that are performed by a riparian area. It would need to be at least 1,000 feet. I know staff in Jefferson County have looked at 6,000 feet. They use that as their science. It's, 250 feet is a policy compromise, and it's given guidance in the Fish and Wildlife, guidance from even 1994 that recommends it for a shoreline of the state, and that would cover it more than the natural and conservatory designations. 250 feet is not an economic burden for a landowner. It actually adds security for the slope stability, and we know that views are still, are still possible to be had when you're set back farther from the shoreline. Most waterfront owners limb their trees, and it's actually even better view when you see the water through the northwest landscape of conifers, keeping those old trees. And many landowners, in my area anyway, have waterfront homes that are already 250 feet, and they were put there in the 70s also. Also, riparian areas are not entirely consistently defined in the current draft. You should consider what the guidances, how the guidances identify them that you use in your references. It's always structured vegetation, having trees, shrubs, and ground cover that are native. Grasses would not be part of a component of a riparian area. You do allow some exemptions that, in a way, do not make sense and are basically what the Washington State Conservation Office has said that you cannot still do things the same way and expect anything different. What now we need to do is look at a different approach. And so, if you, some of your exemptions allow for rebuilding in a riparian area when that house or structure is completely destroyed due to natural disaster. Guidance tells us now that you should move it out of the riparian area, and the county can offer incentives to landowners, encourage them to rebuild in the management area rather than continue the same mistakes of the past, putting it back in the riparian area. It would add safety and security to homeowners as well, keep out of flood plains, flood areas. Also, hard armoring, and I know the light is red, but I wonder if I could just have a moment to complete this on this?
Yeah, go ahead.
Hard armoring. Oh, okay, thanks. It's another important part of the changes in the critical area ordinance. And while you are updating the SMP at the same time, it offers you a chance to be consistent on hard armoring. The USGS recent publication has stated that SMPs can prohibit hard armoring. There's nothing in there that has made, makes anyone need to have a hard armoring. And as we have learned over the past several years, bioengineering is much stronger, safer, and long-lasting because it mimics nature, and it provides a much better buffer between that wave erosion and marine erosion and your land-based erosion. It offers that transition between your upland and your marine areas that allow for natural filtration of water behind it, and so you won't need to have, you will have less problems with the land-based erosion, which is, in fact, more common than your marine erosion in this area. And it's timely also to change from hard armoring to offer incentives for landowners, waterfront owners to use bioengineering, because the Washington Department of Fish and Wildlife is coming out in the next year with guidance for contractors and engineers on specific codes that they could use for soft armoring.
Okay, Donna, I need to wrap up.
So it's timely, and, yeah, just wanted to say one last thing about incentives that a recent study also cited in your most recent draft of the CAO has been on the economic value of the Puget Sound Basin. And because these natural areas create so much monetary ecosystem benefits for the landowner and the public, those figures can be used to provide clear incentives, of actual monetary incentives for property owners to even go beyond basic requirements in the CAO and become better stewards. So a combination of those three pillars of compliance, enforcement, incentives, and better education for landowners can help us have a much more healthy natural ecosystem.
Okay, thank you, Donna.
Yes, thanks. That was to be my end too, so, thanks.
Okay, I have some people who have not testified yet that have just signed up, so I'm going to start calling the numbers. Number 51.
Hi, my name is Michelle Morris, and I live in Thurston County. And first of all, I want to let you know how grateful I am to all of you for this incredible journey you've been on. I really appreciate it, and also the seriousness and the fortitude that you show working through this long, complicated process. I'm grateful to you. And I just signed up to get on a planning committee myself, so I hope we never get a project like this. Okay. The projected population growth that the real estate representative mentioned this morning earlier in testimony is a compelling reason why it is imperative that Thurston County has a strong and just critical areas ordinance in place. I didn't write down fast enough what he said, but I believe we were going to, I won't even go there. 170,000 new people in the next few years. We must ensure that our community members can enjoy the bountiful and beautiful surrounding ecosystems that we have enjoyed ourselves. And that's all I want to say, is it's imperative that we have a strong critical areas ordinance in place, and thank you for seeing that we do.
Thank you. Number 52. And when you come up, I'm sorry, will you please state your name and address for the record?
Yes, my name is Xena Hartung. My address is 3240 Centerwood Court, Olympia, 9501. I too want to thank you all for the hard work you've done. I've gone online, I've flipped through the very dense and specific work you've done, and I can just imagine that you've agonized over every word. So, and I want to state that a number of the people I've listened to today, I agree with their positions with Donna, with her positions on the riparian zone. The larger the riparian zone, the better grown over the years with native plants, the more likely that that stream is going to be clean. However, water concerns are very high on my list. I'm on the Water Conservancy Board here in Thurston County. I have studied watered out at Evergreen, and water is tricky. It's all around us in such abundance that we don't really always understand the consequences of some of the water situations. So I just wrote down a little, one of my many concerns about water, and it just so happens in this circumstance, and I don't know that it will ever happen again, that I agree with Glenn Morgan. A flush of the toilet, be it a low flow at a gallon and a half or the old-fashioned three-gallon flush, requires the system, either city sewer or septic, to accept the contents of that flush. With growth in population comes a need for more flushes and more systems. Lot was supposed to be the saving grace of population growth, but some issues came with Lot that we never really figured out. One was how to get financially strapped people to give up their cheap but aging septic systems, and another was how to build a system big enough to accept the sewage from the homes where they did give up theirs and go to sewer. But the really knotty problems really have to do with reclaimed water and what's in it. As I understand it, reclaimed water is what Lot is famous for. They remove the floaters and the sinkers, and the nitrogen is filtered out and a few other things, phosphorus, I believe. What's left looks clean and bears the name of reclaimed. As of today, this water is not put through any kind of reverse osmosis system, so it cannot really be called the highly polished water that we hear about in California. Of course, California would have something highly polished. That is the extent of my understanding of reclaimed water. I mean, really, it ends there. I don't pretend to have a grasp of best available science on the problems of reclaimed water, but I do understand the idea of erring on the side of caution. We know the Lot plant has some pretty sophisticated systems, but they aren't testing for pharmaceuticals, for heavy metals, for viruses, blah, blah, blah. And for the myriad of products that we know pass through the systems of those of us who flush our toilets. So I have some concern for the untested constituents in that reclaimed water. That said, I know we want Lot to continue to function, and to do so, they must find more places to put that reclaimed water. So as it is, some goes directly into the butt inlet, some goes out on the golf course, and as I understand, they want even more of it to be reabsorbed nearby where it will sink into our water table. So essentially, we'll be making tea with the water that was once pee, and as recently as just a few years ago.
Xena? I'm sorry to interrupt. I'm sorry, I forgot the new speakers weren't here for my initial briefing. We're trying to keep the comments to about three minutes. There's a timer here. Once you hit two and a half, it'll go yellow. Once it hits red, your three minutes is up. I'm going to allow you about two more minutes.
It'll take me half that, thank you.
That's fine.
I can't believe that the nitrogen and other primary chemicals that have been removed, but what about these other constituents? Don't we want the best scientists in the field making this call? Where should the reclaimed water safely be introduced to our soils? So as I understand it, we need a set of ordinance that protect the citizens of Thurston County, protect our environment, protect our wild places, from the full range of affronts our modern-day life and growing population can inflict upon all of us. You were calling that the critical areas ordinance, and I'm ready to back it all the way, since there are a range of consequences which the ordinary citizens shouldn't have to consider, like whether our drinking water is safe. Thank you for applying the precautionary principle when it comes to these systems that we rely on. Thanks.
Thank you. 53.
My name is Charles Erpony Ellingson. I live at 304 Northwest 177th Street in Shoreline, Washington. I'm a state licensed hydrogeologist, and I've worked at Thurston County groundwater for about 25 years, and I speak with detailed familiarity with the groundwater and its uses. I'll be submitting some written comments, and if you have questions of me or you'd like to hear more about that, I would be happy to come to your meeting or answer questions from staff as well. First of all, geologically, you proposed a geologic basis for karas, and I think that needs more work. You have proposed, this draft proposes to categorize very low permeability materials as karas, and that is contrary to conventional thinking anyway, and I'm unaware of a county document substantiating why it should, in this case, be a kara. For instance, bedrock and till areas, glacial till areas, are categorized as karas in this document. So I either, I think that needs a better look. You haven't proven that that unusual interpretation is, in fact, best available science for Thurston County. And it results in huge areas of the county being so classified as karas, which is a big impact for the, for the community here. I have several comments that I'll submit with regard to reclaimed water. Most of them regard getting away from being arbitrary and going and encouraging site-specific analyses of the appropriateness of reclaimed water infiltration at any place that might be considered. And an example would be the use of wellhead protection areas as an exclusionary zone for reclaimed water. Although one-year travel time may very well indeed be appropriate, the existing wellhead protection areas do not provide you a reliable basis on which to judge whether water, reclaimed water would be captured by a well or a stream, it's a well in this case, and what that timing would be. They're generated by many different means, and I'd be happy, I can't go into that right now, but the existing wellhead protection areas are not a good basis for the regulation that you're seeking. I encourage it to be site-specifically analyzed, which is very much within the capability of Lot, for instance. Another one would be the soil filtration criteria. That, again, I would encourage it to be handled as a site-specific analysis using the soils in Thurston County at a particular site that might be proposed. And these, the filtration process and the travel times can all be calculated very specifically for a proposed site. Stream proximity is another example. Not all your streams here actually receive groundwater, so they could not receive reclaimed water if it were infiltrated into the ground. So a simple setback from a stream is not an appropriate criterion. Again, site-specific analysis would be the appropriate basis. That's all I'll say. I'll leave these comments and answer your questions if we have any.
Charles, I'm curious. I noticed you lived in Shoreline. I'm just wondering why your interest in Thurston County was?
I've worked here for 25 years, as I said. I've worked for many people in the room, the county, private interests, all of the cities. So professionally, I am deeply involved, and I've just come to care about it as well. No one's paying me to be here today.
I was just curious. Thank you. Number 54.
Good afternoon, commissioners, planning commissioners, and planning staff. My name is Deborah Jaquah. I'm a resident and property owner in Thurston County, 3104 59th Court, Southeast Olympia Law, 9501. Thank you for this opportunity to testify about the update of the critical areas ordinance. I am, in addition to being a property owner, I am also the coordinator for Go Thurston, an all-volunteer grassroots group that seeks to protect our precious natural heritage, water resources, and ag lands through science-based ordinances and accurate information and respectful dialogue. We believe that an examination and update of the current CAO is long overdue. I've heard other folks thank you for all your work, and I just want to add to that. I've been to many planning commission meetings over the last six months, and I'm so in, I'm truly in awe of the work that you folks are doing. It's been much more than you ever, I'm sure, have signed up for. And all of these meetings have been held in front of the public. It couldn't have been any more transparent. I've seen each of you ask the tough questions about CAO topics, and your questions indicated that you've all done your homework, and you've remained amazingly civil and yet assertive and diligent. And in my humble opinion, you have modeled the very best of citizen activism, and I sincerely thank you for your efforts. Go Thurston has collected signatures of 125 citizens, and it's a very simple petition. It says, "We, the undersigned citizens of Thurston County, support the revision of Thurston County's critical areas ordinance, using the best available science." And it outlines what the critical areas are. 125 people, so I'd like to submit these to the county. Some people speaking here today have said that they do not want the CAO updated. They don't want regulations on what they do with their land. However, these regulations, including the CAO, exist for the benefit of us all. Now, having said that I favor updating the CAO, there are three items that I feel should be strengthened in this version of the CAO. First is the draft chapter 25, sorry, 24.25, and it's table 24.25-3 on page 14. It talks about clearing and grading in riparian habitat buffers, and I feel that clearing and grading should be prohibited in all riparian habitat buffers and only conditionally allowed in management zones. Reason, also, number two, reasonable use exemptions should be allowed. However, the reasonable use should encourage through the use of incentives, the use of green building techniques that are already being employed by some builders in the region. And three, the critical area aquifer recharge, the critical aquifer recharge areas, the karas. I echo comments made from other folks before me. Please use the precautionary, come down on the side of caution. Give the most caution, the most protection that you can give to the aquifer recharge areas. Once our water is contaminated by things such as microplastics from cosmetics in water, chemo drugs, endocrine disruptors, these are all things that are new to science, and the science is still young on them. Please just make it as strong as you can, please, because once our water is contaminated, we're all done for here. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Number 55.
My name is Bob Vodis, representing the Black Hills Audubon Society, and I live in Olympia. The address is 1125 12th Avenue, Southeast, number F204. Anyway, thank you for the opportunity to provide public comment. I should note that the Black Hills Audubon Society has 1,100 members in Thurston County. My comments, I'll keep brief, but I believe that, we believe that the new draft of the CAO is good for tailoring to individual circumstances and providing flexibility and not just a cookie cutter solution, so we love that. We do think that it provides good fish, wildlife, surface, and groundwater benefits, and it also has socioeconomic benefits and is friendlier to neighbors when we know that there's a lot of flooding problems in Thurston County from development that's not well planned. Another thing is, is this whole critical area ordinance thing helps make us more pre-adapted to climate change, and with climate change, a lot of places that are now wetlands in particular, may well be underwater. And the better we can do at protecting these kind of areas... And the better we can do at protecting these kind of areas, the less people are going to be, have damage from flooding like we see along the Chehalis River. And in general, also too, being in low-lying areas makes people vulnerable to, on the coast, to tsunamis and in the valleys to potential volcanic eruptions. And fill land in particular is very earthquake hazardous. So trying to protect these kind of areas, these environmentally friendly or just geologically kind of dangerous areas, really makes sense, not only from the environmental standpoint but from people, people as well. The draft will need strengthening to better meet these three fundamental requirements: the standard of no net loss, the special consideration clause of the GMA that places extra weight on functions necessary to recover salmon, and consideration and evaluation of cumulative effects. We would like to emphasize that wider buffer protection definitely should be recommended in undisturbed areas where we still have a chance to protect some of these unique habitats. Wider habitats allow for different fish and wildlife species than narrow areas, and hence we can help biodiversity that way. The other thing I'd like to say is we should try to promote connectivity between habitats where possible for climate change reasons in particular, and this includes for urban wetlands, prairies, and all the other types of critical areas that where animals need to move back and forth between. Also, would like to suggest that we really need to, low-impact development, green building techniques where possible, that will have a lesser footprint and will better protect critical areas. If that's, if there are incentives to do that, that would be great. Definitely would like to make a case against shoreline armoring where possible. We now have bioengineering solutions with native plants and large woody debris, which are, not only are they biologically friendly, but they also are, once you start armoring shorelines, whether the marine or fresh water, usually other people, neighbors, will have to start doing the same. It becomes kind of like an arms race where everybody's having to scramble to keep up with each other because of the damage that their neighbors are doing once they start armoring. So these, more natural shorelines allow for spawning of fork fishes. They're very important for threatening and danger to salmon in Puget Sound. And finally, I just wanted to, want to say on behalf of the Audubon Society that, for the Black Hills chapter, that a multifaceted critical area approach with both positive and negative incentives where needed is good. We can, I think we can manage better by not having just a one, a single kind of bullet, so to speak. So with that, I'll close, and thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Donna Weaver?
Hey, I put my reading glasses on, so now I can see my paper. I can't speak, or I won't speak, to the wetlands issues, the marine buffers, or the those type of critical areas. What I'd like to speak directly to is the industrial zone properties, the Grand Mound DGA, the properties that have already been zoned for use in those arenas. Those properties we are finding are rapidly becoming subject to these critical areas, prairie soils situations. Many of the people who are working with those properties are finding that this particular critical areas ordinance with its relationship to the prairie soils impacts the industrial zone properties greatly. We zone those as a county to be industrial. They're in prime locations to be used by I-5, by companies north and south, and I see nothing in the criteria for the critical areas ordinance that discusses that. There should be exceptions in that direction, I believe. The other arenas I'd like to speak to, Speaker 54 had spoke of 125 names that she has delivered in a petition for her company. I would like a copy of that. Strictly because Speaker 23 talked about building trust. In our July, in our July hearing, I too delivered 120-plus names in my documentation to the commissioners. They were not counted. They are not publicized as being those numbers. They did not count the names. I had previously, prior to the hearing, I had called the county staff, asked if it was appropriate, could those names be typed in addition to my letter? I was told they would be counted. I was not told I had to have individual signatures. I was not told that I needed to add anything but their names. I spoke with those people individually, one-on-one. They said, "Add my name." I added their name, and in every publication that the county is giving, they're not counting those numbers. That does not build my trust. I took the word of the county staff that that would be appropriate to do. I was told after the fact, "Sorry, it's not." So that doesn't build my trust at all. Time's up. Thank you very much.
Thank you. That is all the names that I have that are signed up. Is there anybody else that wishes to testify? Number sixty-two.
Good afternoon. My name's Scott Iger. I live at 4631 Durham Street in Lacey, 98503. I'm the Public Works Director for City of Lacey. First thing I'd like to do is thank you for your efficiency. Lock, lock in the door. There you go. You know, this critical areas ordinance, a very critical item. Again, we'd like to thank you for all your time, effort, and consideration in looking into this. City of Lacey, we will be providing detailed written comments for the required date, which I believe is December 23rd, so I'll keep this pretty quick. At this time, I'd like to respectfully request that you remove the reclaimed water content from the critical areas regulations and insert a placeholder. In other words, we're asking that Thurston County not place the card in front of the course. We're asking you to recognize the authority, the expertise of the State of Washington, Department of Ecology, and Department of Health as having to be an oversight authority for regulating the treatment and use of reclaimed water. The state agencies have extensive treatment standards and extensive use requirements that can be consistently applied through the reclaimed water permitting process. As such, we do not see that it is necessary or that, excuse me, there is an urgent need for the county to adopt reclaimed water regulations ahead of the state. If you decide that you need to move ahead with developing reclaimed water regulations, I'm sorry, I was kind of winded running and getting here, so. But anyway, if you feel the need to move ahead, we just ask Ian that you insert a placeholder and that you, which would allow you to finalize the remaining critical area regulations separately and move ahead in a timely manner with those items. What, the reason we're asking for that is that proposed requirements could potentially cost the citizens of our community upwards of $300 million. And as being stewards of our taxpayers' dollars, and by stewards, you know, the responsible government officials, staff, volunteers, we're, that is something that we're, part of our, you know, critical task. And I'd hope you agree that the decisions that could yield financial impacts of this magnitude to our community warrant deviation from the standard plan and commission process, which will allow additional time for more investigation and consideration. So with that, it's my testimony. Thank you.
Thank you. Sixty-three.
Good afternoon. I'm Peter Brooks. I live at 3937 South Glenn Place, Southeast, Tumwater, Zico's 98501. I'm the Water Resources Manager for the City of Lacey, and I would also like to speak about the reclaimed water recharge portion of the kara, the critical aquifer recharge area. That's 2410190. First, I'd like to thank the commission for the work you're doing. It's contentious work, it's difficult work, and you volunteered to do it, so thank you for your service. What you need to, what I want to get across to you is that reclaimed water can be perceived as either a resource that needs to be regulated to a certain extent, but a resource, or it can be perceived as a potential pollutant. Lot, City of Lacey, Lot Partners have been moving down a path for several years where we see it as a resource. These regulations seem to give the impression that you see it as perceived pollutant. Lot and the partners, as we use reclaimed water, including infiltration, it's all covered under a state and federal-issued infiltration or reclaimed water permit. So it's already regulated. So what, what these ordinances would do is put another layer of regulation on top. The sciences this commission understands and has been working on, the science is kind of unknown, unsettled. So putting a regulation in that's more stringent than what the state and federal government's doing, we don't even know if it's necessary, seems like it's over the top. I agree with what Scott said, it would be good to set this section aside for future deliberation. You need, I think, more time to have studies done, to better understand fate, transport, toxicity of the contaminants concerned, and time will give you that. However, if you can't set this aside and you need to actually do something now, Lacey recommends that you maintain the one-year time of travel from wellhead protection. That's a good standard to have to protect the water. As a Water Resources Manager, I care about the water resource. The water we get for all of our citizens comes from wells. I don't want to pollute it, so one-year time of travel is a good thing. And then you should also stipulate in the regulation that the use, infiltration of the water needs to comply with the state and federal permits that are issued. Beyond that, I think it's unnecessary. I think you should only implement those two restrictions for now, and then periodically review the ordinance. See what the science is telling you. Do you need to do something more? Maybe you don't. But I think that placing the kind of restrictions that are in the draft ordinance right now will provide uncertain amount of benefit, but it will come at a definite cost. Thank you.
Can I ask you a question? Can I just ask that the City of Lacey was submitting your written comments, be as specific as possible as to the language? You're concerned with costing the $300 billion. I'm having a bit of disconnect between the draft and then some assumptions, so that would really help me if you really lined that up specifically. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anybody else? Would you like to speak? I'll give you another three minutes if you'd like to speak again. Correct.
Hi, I'm Michelle Morris again. My address is 2217 60th Lane Northwest, Olympia, 98502. And after listening to the previous speakers, I really request that you remember in grad school, we heard about the two Ps, precautionary principle. I'd like to venture that we make that the three Ps, P-E-E, precautionary principle. Please remember the three Ps. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
This time, I'll speak on my own behalf. Bob Vodis again. As a scientist who works on water issues, when the state developed its aquifer storage and recovery plan, they specifically pointed out that this could be used as a flow augmentation technique for streams that are overdrawn already, but definitely put language in there saying that such reclaimed water should have good water quality. So the state certainly, in their ASR plan, definitely has recognized that it can only work if it's good water quality. If you put bad water quality in, it will definitely have aquatic impacts on fish and wildlife. Thanks.
Okay. Not exactly the last chance, but I'm going to take a recess if nobody else wishes to speak. Okay, I'll take a ten-minute recess. Sina?